We are assembled at the Claremont Opera House located at 58 Opera House Square in Claremont, New Hampshire. In addition to in-person participation, we are using the Microsoft Teams platform to offer remote participation in the hearing. This public hearing, the purpose of which is to receive comments on an application for recycling services request for a capacity increase and to collect construction demolition debris at its facility located at 43 Industrial Boulevard in Claremont, New Hampshire, is now officially open and is being recorded. My name is Sarah Yuhas Kern, and I serve as the Assistant Director of the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Waste Management Division, and I'm the presiding officer for this public hearing. During the hearing, I may refer to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services as NHDES, the department, or DES. During the hearing, I'll provide an overview of the technology that we'll be using. I'll explain the mechanism for submitting verbal and written comments and how to register to provide verbal comments. The applicant's representative will also provide a brief presentation, and lastly, we will receive public comments. I'd like to take a moment to introduce to you the team that we have supporting this public hearing. You see me at the center of the table, and to my left is Jason Avansik of the Solid Waste Management Bureau. We also have Mike Wimsat, Director of the Waste Management Division at New Hampshire DES. And in the back, we have Sam Lazo of the Solid Waste Management Bureau. Do you want to wave to us, Sam? Just help me, someone. We have Jean Ronigan of the Department of Information Technology and Jeremy Lewis of the Waste Management Division at DES. Sam, Jean, and Jeremy are coordinating the use of the hearing software and providing technical support. All participants in the hearing have the opportunity to listen and will be able to provide oral testimony through the Microsoft Teams platform by phone or in person. If you'd like to speak during the hearing, you will need to either be here in person at the Claremont Opera House, or join the meeting from a computer with a microphone, or from an iOS, Android, or Windows phone device, or by telephone. A link to access the hearing online or by phone is available through the DES Events Calendar found on our department's webpage. At this time, I'm going to provide an introduction to the Microsoft Teams platform for our online participants. Periodically throughout the hearing, I will provide instructions on how to use Microsoft Teams. We will turn on and describe certain functions of the software when we are soliciting testimony. When you're logged into Microsoft Teams, you will see the Q&amp;A button at the top of your screen, and I'll provide instructions on using that Q&amp;A button later in the hearing. Right now, all online attendees are muted with no video feed, and you should be able to see and hear me. Online attendees will remain in this state until the floor is open, at which time we'll turn on and describe the functions of Microsoft Teams that will allow the online attendees to participate. DES will manage the software for the in-person participants, and for remote participants, I will provide detailed instructions on how you request to speak when we open the floor. And please note, when you're unmuted and speaking, DES and all other attendees will hear you, but your video feed will not be transmitted at all. If you need assistance with Microsoft Teams, we have Jeremy Lewis standing by to help. I'll read his phone number and email address now, and his contact information will be posted on the screen intermittently throughout the hearing. You can reach Jeremy by phone at (603) 271-0927, or by email at jeremy.m.louis@des.nh.gov. Again, I'll provide more instructions on using Microsoft Teams later on in the hearing. Next, I'd like to share a few important details about logistics. For in-person attendees, the emergency exits are located in the back, and the restroom is located outside the main entrance. In the event of an emergency requiring evacuation, this hearing will be automatically closed. If it appears that we can return to the building and reopen the hearing within a short period of time, we will do so. If we cannot reopen the hearing tonight, and we have not cycled at least once through all the speakers requesting to be heard, we'll endeavor to return to Claremont to reopen the oral public hearing on another date. We'll announce that date and time to all persons on the service list, and we'll post it on the DES website. If we lose internet connectivity, we'll try to re-establish remote testimony, however, the hearing will continue in person. In addition to oral testimony, DES encourages submission of written testimony. The public comment period for receipt of written testimony will remain open through March 20, 2025, at 4:00 p.m. Please submit written testimony as specified in the public hearing notice. Please understand that the purpose of this hearing is to receive oral testimony to identify the concerns of citizens and governing bodies of the host municipality, county and district, and other affected persons on a solid waste permit application submitted by recycling services to the DES. Your testimony is important to DES as it helps inform our decision-making. Tonight, we'll be focused on listening to what everyone has to say, and we will not be holding a question-and-answer session. In the permit application, Recycling Services Inc. is requesting that DES approve a modification of solid waste facility permit number DESSW87037 to authorize a capacity increase and to authorize them to collect construction and demolition or CND debris in addition to currently permitted Notice of this hearing was published in The Valley News on February 17, and the New Hampshire Union Leader on February 18. It was published in DES's municipal Ecolink newsletter on February 28, 2025. It was posted on the DES website, and it was mailed to abutters of the facility, the host municipality, and other affected entities as identified and required by the New Hampshire Solid Waste Rules. The hearing notice includes the date, time, and place of this hearing and information for obtaining a copy of the application for review. It also provides instructions and the deadline for submitting written testimony. If you're using Microsoft Teams, you can review a copy of the hearing notice by visiting our NHDES calendar page. Copies are available here in the auditorium near the entrance as well. Now, let's review the hearing agenda. First, Jason Avansik will provide a brief overview of the solid waste permit application and the criteria DES must use to make its decision to approve or deny the requested permit modification. He'll also explain where we currently are in the application review process and what the next steps will be after this hearing. Second, a representative of Recycling Services will provide a description of the requested approval and application. Then, we'll take a five-minute break. Immediately following the break, we will accept public comment on the application in an orderly fashion. Anyone wishing to make oral comments for the department to consider during its review of the application will have the opportunity to do so during this hearing. And as I mentioned, we also encourage folks to submit written testimony tonight or over the next two weeks. Jason will now provide information about the solid waste permitting process.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, everyone. As Sarah had stated, my name is Jason Avansik. I'm a permit engineer with Solid Waste Management Bureau and the current reviewer of this permit application. For context, the Solid Waste Management Bureau regulates the management of solid waste primarily by regulating the facilities that handle solid waste. We accomplish this through administration of a permitting system as required by the Solid Waste Management Act RSA 149M, and as authorized by RSA 149M, the department has adopted administrative rules that apply to solid waste management facilities statewide. At this time, I will briefly explain how the department reviews applications like this. DES's role at this time is to review the application to determine whether it meets the requirements of RSA 149M and the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules for Solid Waste Management, and issue a decision on the application. Generally speaking, review of an application occurs in two steps. The first involves a completeness determination, as we evaluate whether or not we have all the information required by rule. The second involves a review when we evaluate details of the application to determine whether the application provides sufficient information to conclude that the proposed activity meets all applicable requirements and come to a decision. The application review time period is also when we collect and consider public comments. The first step of this process has been accomplished. The department has determined that recycling service application or expansion is complete. Once we do that, we put out a notice stating that the application is available for public comment, and we schedule a public hearing. That is where we are now. We are requesting public comment on the recycling services application, which we will consider when making a decision on the application. We have not yet made a decision. While we are receiving public comments, the application is currently undergoing an application review. During application review, in applications such as this, we look at the requirements specified in New Hampshire Solid Waste Rules for collection, storage, transfer facilities, including siting, design, construction, operation, enclosure of the transfer facility found in chapters ENV SW 400 of the Solid Waste Rules, which incorporates by reference various other rules found in chapters ENVs 900 through ENVs SW 1100, as well as ENVs SW 1400. Once we have received your comments and completed an application review of the application, including waiver application, we will issue a final decision. We have three outcomes: we can deny the application, we can approve the application outright, or we can approve the application with conditions. The solid waste rules identify the explicit grounds for denial. Rules in the solid waste statute are available online for either the DES website or the state legislative website. This is a brief review of the application review process. Sarah?
Thank you, Jason. Next, representatives of Recycling Services will present a description of the application and facility for which they're seeking a solid waste permit modification.
Can everyone hear me? My name is Naomi Proll. I'm a civil engineer with Nobis Group. I'm here tonight presenting on behalf of Recycling Services Incorporated. We are here tonight to talk about a proposed modification to an existing recycling facility operated by RSI. The recycling facility is located on a one-and-a-half-acre lot on the south side of Industrial Boulevard in Claremont. Looking at the aerial photo on the screen, you can see the existing facility in the context of the surrounding area: the airport to the north, Plains Road to the west, the railroad to the west and immediate south, and Maple Avenue south of the rail line. The existing recycling facility was permitted by NHDES in December of 1987 and has been in continuous operation ever since that time. Their existing permit allows acceptance of paper, cardboard, metal, glass, plastics, automotive batteries, and tires. Truck weigh scales are shared with the recycling facility on the opposite side of Industrial Boulevard, also operated by RSI. The property is fenced along Industrial Boulevard with secure gated access. Next slide, please. The proposed permit modification will allow RSI to accept construction and demolition debris in addition to the materials currently accepted. CND debris may be comprised of materials such as concrete, drywall, wood, roofing shingles, essentially materials that could be generated during a home renovation project. To be clear, CND does not include asbestos or other hazardous wastes. There are many components of CND debris that can be recycled, such as asphalt, concrete, metal, and wood. Typically, however, these recyclable materials are not removed before CND is landfilled. RSI is proposing to extract, sort, and recycle materials from CND, thus reducing the amount of waste destined for landfills. Non-recyclable material remaining following the extraction of recyclables will be transported out of New Hampshire by rail for final disposal. Let me reiterate that: non-recyclable material remaining following the extraction of recyclables will be transported out of New Hampshire by rail for final disposal. Acceptance of CND debris requires an increase to RSI's permitted facility capacity. The proposed permit modification includes construction of a new multimillion-dollar building to accommodate the additional CND material and to contain operations. The site plan on the screen shows the new building, which will be constructed in the existing building footprint. It will be equipped with state-of-the-art systems for dust suppression and odor control. Material sorting operations will occur within the building to minimize noise. Materials will be stored inside the building or in outdoor enclosed or covered containers. Additional proposed improvements at the site consist of new paved access and parking, a stormwater collection system, and new rail spurs, resulting in a cleaner site and a better visual aesthetic. Truck traffic traveling to and from RSI will continue to utilize routes preferred by the city of Claremont via major roads and state highways to the extent possible. A study was performed by a professional traffic engineer based on projected truck traffic associated with the permit modification. This study confirmed the adequacy of the intersections closest to the recycling facility. Truck circulation patterns through and around the facility have been evaluated to ensure queuing of trucks will not occur in Industrial Boulevard or interfere with surrounding traffic. Hours of facility operations will remain what they are currently: five and a half days per week. The recycling facility is closed on Sundays. The proposed permit modification to allow RSI to accept CND debris will benefit not only the city of Claremont, but the state of New Hampshire as a whole. We face numerous challenges in the field of waste management. We are running out of space and need to solve what is fast approaching a crisis-level problem. RSI is working towards solutions. They are investing in local infrastructure to address the issue of diminishing landfill space and to maximize material recycling. Their proposed facility operations divert recyclables from landfills with the goal of ensuring that those materials are directed to appropriate markets for reuse. RSI is also making the most of their unique proximity to the railroad to employ rail transport for waste material, resulting in reduced impacts to roads and to air quality. Approval of the proposed recycling facility permit modification will bring us a step closer to more conscientious management of the waste we are all responsible for generating. Thank you.
In a few moments, we'll take a break. However, I would like to explain the ground rules for the testimony portion of the hearing and provide instructions for delivering oral testimony. Our objective this evening is to give everyone who wishes to speak a reasonable opportunity to do so. After you've provided your name in accordance with the upcoming instructions, I will call on people to speak in the order displayed on the screen. Based on the number of attendees, I request that you limit your testimony to three minutes. Jason will be monitoring your time and will show you the yellow card when you have one minute left. When you see the yellow card, please start wrapping up your testimony. When Jason shows the red card, that means that your time is up, and at that point, please graciously yield the floor without significant delay so that I can call on the next speaker in line. If you run out of time before you finish what you had to say, you can add your name back to the bottom of the list, and after we cycle through all the people who would like to speak, you will get another chance. We're frequently asked whether a speaker can yield their time to another speaker of their choice. This is a practice that we're not going to allow at this hearing. Instead, we intend to proceed through the list of names to give everyone the time that they need to provide the comments. In other words, the person you might wish to yield your time to will have plenty of opportunity to testify. They'll just need to request to testify and wait their turn in line. When I call your name, if you decide you do not wish to speak at that time, let me know, and we'll place your name back at the end of the list to be called on after all the other speakers have cycled. If you're at the Opera House and wish to turn in written testimony this evening, please place it in the designated box to be receipt stamped and secured as part of the official record. You'll find that box next to the entrance of the auditorium. If you're accessing this hearing remotely, please submit written testimony as instructed in the notice of the public hearing. As a reminder, a copy of the public hearing notice is available on the DES website and here in the auditorium. We often receive questions about how someone can receive notice when DES issues a decision on the application. Everyone who's registered to attend the hearing remotely or who filled out a testimony card with their contact information will be placed on the list for receiving notice when the decision on the application is issued. Those folks who did not fill out a testimony card or register for the hearing but would like to receive notice of the decision can add their name to a sheet at the table near the auditorium entrance, or contact the Solid Waste Management Bureau by email at swpublic commenting at des.nh.gov, or by calling (603) 271-2935. As I mentioned before, this hearing is being recorded. Therefore, during the public testimony session, please speak clearly and start your testimony by stating your name. If you forget to do so, I will briefly interrupt you to remind you. If you're here in person and would like to provide oral comments, please fill out a testimony card and place it in the designated box if you've not already done so, and that's at the back of the auditorium or just outside the door. DES staff will add your name to the list displayed on the screen if you do so. If you're accessing this public hearing remotely, please listen closely to the following instructions on how to provide oral testimony using Microsoft Teams. For oral testimony, we'll use the Microsoft Teams Q&amp;A function. Using this function, you'll let DES know you'd like to provide oral testimony by entering your identifying information into the Microsoft Teams Q&amp;A box. I'll walk through specific instructions on how to do that in a moment. Please note that we're not actually soliciting questions to be answered at this time. Rather, we're using the Microsoft Teams Q&amp;A function to identify who would like to be called upon to provide oral testimony and to assist us in tracking testimony. Please enter only your name, address, and who you represent in the Q&amp;A box. The information typed in the Q&amp;A box is not your testimony, and you should not type any substantive comment in this box. In order to be added to the list to provide oral testimony, you will need to enter your name, address, and who you represent. For those participating by phone who would like to comment, dial *5 on your keypad to raise your hand to signal that you'd like to comment. When instructed to do so after the break, you'll dial *6 to unmute your microphone. We traditionally attempt to provide state senators, representatives, and executive counselors the opportunity to speak first, and we'd like to do that during this hearing. If you're a senator or representative or executive counselor participating remotely and would like to be called upon early in the queue, please write senator, representative, executive counselor before your name, and we'll attempt to put you up front in the Now, you should see the Q&amp;A box in the Microsoft Teams dashboard. If you want to provide testimony, please type your name, address, and who you represent in this box, and then hit Enter to submit. We'll be monitoring the list of attendees who are submitting this information, and we'll place your name in the queue. Please remember that if you need technical assistance with getting onto the list to provide oral testimony, you can contact Jeremy Lewis of DES by phone or email, by phone at (603) 271-0927, or by email at jeremy.m.louis@des.nh.gov. We'll now take a short break to enter the names on the list, and we'll be back in five minutes. Okay, we're going to get started, so please, everyone, take your seats. As I mentioned earlier, our objective this evening is to give everyone who wishes to speak a reasonable opportunity to do so. If your testimony will not fit inside the allotted time of three minutes, you're welcome to resume during a subsequent round of testimony. Also, I ask that everyone be respectful of each other. There are differing viewpoints represented by the participants of this hearing, and issues can be emotionally charged. In all cases, I ask that participants honor the process of being able to hold a public hearing, to hear differing viewpoints and concerns by extending each other's civility and courtesy. We'll begin hearing oral testimony at this time. I'll call on individuals one at a time. For in-person participants, DES will manage the microphones in this room, and for remote participants, please ensure that your microphone is not muted when it's your time to speak. When called on, begin your testimony by stating your name, and then proceed with your comments. We have a number of people who have indicated that they would like to provide testimony. Our first person will be Representative Brian Sullivan, and then we'll have Representative Hope Damon. Representative Sullivan, when I turn the floor over to you, please start at the microphone by stating your name, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm sorry. My name is Brian Sullivan, Representative from Grantham, Sullivan County, District 1, and I do have concerns about this project. I have concerns for the entire county and the impacts it will have in the county. I have specific concerns about my town of Grantham. We are right on 89. Exit 13 is, I suspect, going to be impacted fairly dramatically by trucks coming up 89, getting off at 89, heading towards Croydon, then Newport, and then eventually Claremont. And the wear and tear on the roads, the amount of traffic that'll be coming through. These are small towns, and I'm very concerned, especially about the traffic and the possibility of spillage and that type of thing as well. So I think that would be the major concern for a town like Grantham that's right on the interstate and part of the trail to Claremont. So I'll leave time for other people, but thank you for taking my testimony.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Representative Hope Davidson? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. Good evening. I'm State Representative Hope Damon. I represent Sullivan, District 8, which is Claremont, my hometown of Croydon, Sunapee, Springfield, Goshen, Washington, Leamster, and Acworth, and Langdon. I said that in a completely different order than I usually do. It threw me off. First of all, this is just such a wonderful community turnout. It is very, very clear how gravely concerned we collectively are, and I thank DES, both the folks who are here and the folks working on this behind the scenes in Concord, for coming out here and your attention. My particular concerns, which I'm sure will be echoed by many, it is very clear that this site is simply not adequate in size for the amount of work that is proposed to happen there. When you contrast that with other facilities who are doing the same amount of work, same amount of materials, they have a far, far larger site to do it in. Secondly, the impact, as Representative Sullivan noted, of the traffic. Frankly, the city doesn't have the resources now to adequately maintain the road infrastructure, not even close. This is an unreasonable burden. So this is an extremely unreasonable burden for the city of Claremont. And again, echoing Representative Sullivan, as trucks come down off of 89 through Grantham, through Croydon, we already have a safety issue in Croydon. As kids go to the village school, those who walk, we don't need a greater safety issue there. And then I would also note, with all due respect to the prior speaker, I think it's completely unrealistic to think that there won't be asbestos in construction and demolition of the building. I am married to a wonderful retired building contractor who's being my surrogate at a meeting in Sunapee tonight, and as we talked about this, that was one of the first things he brought up. He did renovations and remodeling, and there were always concerns, depending on the age of the building, to of the building, to be safe in regards to asbestos. So I will stop there, but I very, very vigorously encourage DES to not permit this.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have John Tuttill. And following Mr. Tuttill, we will have Ken Launey.
My name, for the record, is John Tuttill. I live in Acworth, New Hampshire, a small rural community outside of Claremont, and had a long interest in seeing Claremont as a thriving city, which benefits all of us living in the outer reaches of the county. Welcome to Claremont. Don't be afraid. You've been here before, back in the 80s, again in the 90s, and the early 2000s. And I have to say that each time DES has held a public hearing in Claremont on a permit application, whether it be the Air Resources Division or the Waste Management Division, a permit has been approved. And a lot of travile and trouble has ensued as a result of that sometimes over decades. So I'm hoping we'll see a different outcome with this application, and I think there are strong grounds for denying Acuity's application. This is actually the third application Acuity has filed, the first in 2017. At that stage, they were proposing a straight-up 500 to 800 tons per day operation on an open concrete slab. The applicant withdrew that application fairly quickly. The second application scaled daily tonnage down somewhat and proposed a building, which I should note, incidentally, cannot meet the city code setback requirements. That application was denied administratively by DES in 2020. And this, the third application, was filed with DES over 18 months ago with a new engineering firm onboard and support from a lawyer associated with one of the largest waste management companies in the Northeast. And that application is what this public hearing is about this evening. DES knows that local approvals have not been obtained by Acuity, as required by statute and by rules, yet has, on this third attempt, held an out-of-state waste company's hand in completing its application. I am concerned about that completeness determination, which was made in November. A former Assistant Commissioner at New Hampshire's Department of Environmental Services famously said that DES's role was, to paraphrase, "to get to yes," and I'm afraid he may have been right. So in my view, this application is too good to be true. It doesn't hold together. It doesn't hold up. And it certainly does not meet New Hampshire's public benefit requirement found in RSA 149M. Just in response to the presentation by an engineer for Acuity this evening, I would like to say that there really is no sign of a transfer station or recycling facility at 43 Industrial Boulevard. There is a raw site there that was once, long ago, a recycling business, primarily bailing cardboard and warehousing a limited amount of material for market. There hasn't been any recycling.
Mr. Tuttill, your time is up.
Thank you. I'll finish this sentence and come back later. Thank you. There hasn't been any recycling beyond the most de minimis activity at number 48 in years. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And next, we have Mr. Launey.
Thank you. My name is Ken Launey. I live at 379 Jarvis Hill Road here in Claremont. I think that most of the feedback we hear will end up being in four categories. We'll hear people talk about the location. We'll hear people talk about the site. We'll hear people talk about pollution. And we'll hear people talk about the impact on the region, as a developing region. I'm going to focus specifically on the site issues, and there are three I want to point out. On a tax map for this site, it shows us one acre. If you take into account setbacks, it'll be less than half an acre of usable space. That's half an acre to do this process. A similar process is done in Epping at a great facility, frankly, that does it right, and they use over 40 acres on a 75-acre site. I think it's a remarkable difference. I want you to picture a half acre in your mind. Some of you live on Halfacre. Now fill it with dozens of dumpster loads coming in and being dumped in that yard, and just picture how high and tall and wide that will be. To recycle construction waste, you have to spread it out. You have to pull things apart to do recycling. You can't do that on this space, which is probably why on the application it says they're going to recycle to the extent practical. I don't think it's going to be practical to do much of any. And yet, recycling is cited throughout the application as the benefit to Claremont, the alignment with the state's waste plan. But if you're not doing any recycling, then you're not accomplishing those goals that are cited in the application. The second thing I wanted to point out was a technical one, which is leachate, water runoff. The application says there won't be any. Don't worry about it. But they also say elsewhere in the application that they will use water to tamp down the pile to control dust. Somehow, the water they add won't go anywhere, and that's not practical, to use their own term. So there's just no accommodation for leachate in an area with an aquifer. The last thing is just the idea that there are two parcels here, named in the operating plan in the application, not one. And I don't understand how that works. If I get a permit to operate a nice little restaurant on a nice little site, I don't get to then use the parcel next door that I happen to own and build a restaurant twice as big. It doesn't work that way. You get a permit for a site. So that's what I have to say, except on a little more personal note, I want to say a word directly to the company. Listen, Claremont's my adopted town. I really like it. It has a special place in my heart. I care for this town a great deal. I see you've been trying to hook up with Claremont for quite a while now, for years, through different proposals and approaches. And what I want to tell you is, you know, it's a nice town, but we're not really sure that we're really that into you. So go along. You'll find a nice place, hopefully somewhere else, but go away because we all are in this for the duration. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Kathy Savage and then from Katie LeJoy.
Thank you. I'm Kathy Savage. I live at 80 Edgewood Road, right here in Claremont. My husband and I first came to Claremont in 1977 from Rhode Island and Massachusetts, where we were living before, and we fell in love with Claremont. In the meantime, we, you know, had moved to various and other places, and two years ago, almost three, we came back. This is going to be our, this is our last home. This is where we're staying. And throughout the time that I was employed, we're both retired now, I was working with a couple of colleges and some other companies who had research facilities, and I was part of a lot of preparing proposals for federal support for the research that was going on. I worked at Dartmouth, and I worked at Brown University in Rhode Island before we moved here. And I know that in a proposal, the devil is in the details, and I don't see any details. There isn't anything specific, like, okay, we're going to send this stuff out of state. Well, which state? We're going, you know, I mean, that's like a not-in-my-backyard kind of thing, and that would make us look bad. And, you know, when it says, you know, we're going to get these things in, where are we going to get all of this debris and construction stuff from? There's nothing in there. They don't have a plan. This isn't really a plan. And, you know, having worked in, you know, a long time, I was 29 years at Dartmouth and two years at Brown, it's just, it just boggles my mind because you can't get, I mean, we could not get a federal, you know, proposal in and get it accepted without the details. I think it's important to have them, and if they don't give us the details, it means that there's something going on. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And next, we have Katie LeJoy for testimony, and then we'll hear from Executive Counselor
Good evening. For the record, my name is Katie LeJoy. I live in Charlestown, and the Department of Environmental Services must deny Acuity's permit, not application. For many years, I worked as a public health nurse for the New Hampshire Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program at the Department of Health and Human Services. I have enclosed a poster with my testimony. I sent some electronic comments earlier today that included a poster that shows the minuscule amount of lead it takes to poison a child. I don't know if people can see. Are we not way in the back? It's miniscule. It's miniscule to poison a child. Claremont is a model for New Hampshire on how to decrease lead exposure risks to the city's children. This progress is due in large part to the work of former Mayor Charlene Lovett. Flooding the city's streets with 3,000 tons of toxic construction and demolition waste each week will undermine the progress by increasing lead exposure risk. This is unnecessary and unacceptable, and DES needs to deny Acuity's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And next, we'll hear from Executive Counselor Karen Hill, followed by Rebecca McKenzie.
Thank you so much. My name is Karen Leo-Hill. It's my honor to serve as your Executive Counselor here in District Two, and I'm happy to be in Claremont tonight. Thank you very much to the Department of Environmental Services Director Wimsat and to you for being here. I'm here to listen to the concerns that are being shared. I'm here to observe the process, and I'm here to ask that you keep the public record open for some time so that all of the people who wish to be heard on this will have an opportunity to be a part of the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Rebecca McKenzie, followed by Haley Jones.
Evening. My name is Rebecca McKenzie. Thank you all for being here. This is awesome. So thank you, Director Wimsat, and Sarah, and Jason. For the past four decades, Claremont has been a sacrifice zone. A number of businesses have come to town that have compromised the ability of local residents to recover from the devastating effects of the loss of manufacturing. When I was a child in the 1960s, Claremont was a thriving community downtown, bustled with small local businesses like Smith's Photography, The Queen Shop, Merritt's, Marson's, David Heller, The Toy Castle, on and on. We also had dentists and doctors downtown, and we had the Latches and the Magnet Theaters, Fishman's Woolworths, New Berry's, all kinds of fun things for us kids to do. And those were economically good times. In the 1970s and 80s, things changed with the loss of great manufacturing jobs. One by one, the stores in our downtown closed. To help with the tax base, local leaders thought it would be good to bring in businesses like Wheelabrator Incinerator, harming public health and the image of Claremont. Walmart was invited to town, challenging local businesses with the corporation's ability to charge lower prices. This harmed local businesses and created a barrier to economic viability for them. While the Incinerator's gone, in part thanks to the good work of citizens like those with working on waste and a better Claremont, though Walmart is still here, there are entrepreneurs who are occupying once-empty storefronts downtown. We are so grateful for them. There are changes happening in our community due to the foresight and ingenuity of some local government officials and businesses that are putting effort into revitalization commitments that are moving us forward in the 21st century. We are so grateful for that. But we can't go back. We can't go back to being a toxic dumping ground in New Hampshire for the waste industry. No other community should carry the burden of toxic waste either. It's time to look at waste management practices that are protective of people's health and the health of the environment. We need to adopt extender-producer responsibility standards in our state, as well as zero waste and source sorting at demolition sites for repurposing and recycling materials. We need to teach our children about the concepts of socio-ecological model, which states that we are interdependent on each other for a healthy and vibrant place to live and raise our children, and we need a healthy, biodiverse environment. These are the essence of health for all life. Please say no to permitting this massive toxic CND operation, to which our city officials have said no. Our city planner, our zoning board of adjustment, our conservation commission have all said no, because it is not permitted in the city code. There are three applications. This is the third application that Acuity...
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay.
Feel free to add your name to the list again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Haley Jones, followed by Kyle Messier.
First of all, thank you so much for facilitating this hearing and for spending the time with Claremont tonight. My name is Haley Jones. I am the Vermont and New Hampshire State Director with an organization called Slingshot, where we work alongside communities who are most impacted by environmental health threats to not only take aim at polluters, but to build up local power. For the past six years, I have had the absolute honor of working with the folks at a better Claremont, the community group dedicated to building a thriving, healthy, and sustainable future for the city. That is exactly why I am here today, calling upon the DES to respect local land use decisions and reject this permit application. When I first learned about Acuity's proposal to build a major waste transfer station at the junction, I thought I'd misread the news article. I thought, does this out-of-state company really want to build and truck construction and demolition debris to a tiny site near a residential neighborhood, near an elementary school? And let's be honest, a really well-trafficked passenger rail station? Let me tell you exactly why I was surprised. Anybody who's worked in the environmental health field knows that construction and demolition debris are a poorly regulated and often contaminated waste stream. Mixed wastes can be a vector for persistent... for persistent toxic substances like lead, asbestos, mercury, and a class of chemicals that we know as PFAS. For those who might not be as familiar with the term, PFAS are known as forever chemicals because they build up in our bodies and they do not break down in the environment. They are used to make thousands of products, including common construction materials such as roofing, glass, interior finishes, exterior coatings, and sealants, to make these all non-stick and waterproof. Hundreds of studies link PFAS exposure to health harms, including testicular, kidney, liver, and pancreatic cancer, to reproductive problems, to weakened childhood immunity, low birth weight, endocrine disruption, increased cholesterol, and weight gain in children and adults. It's crucial that we reduce human exposure to these toxic chemicals, by all means necessary. So rather than trucking hundreds of tons of CND waste through Claremont, we really need to fight to turn off the tap on PFAS production to more effectively regulate source separation on-site and establish businesses that actually benefit the community. So once again, thank you so much for coming out tonight, for listening to all the testimony that's come before and that you're about to hear. And we really hope that DES will hear all this love for Claremont and put human and environmental health over corporate profit by denying this permit application. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. And next, we'll hear from Kyle Messier, followed by Ken Burke.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to Claremont to hear our words. I'm here today to speak to a petition signed by hundreds of citizens of Claremont and the surrounding communities of Sullivan County. The petition reads as follows: Please deny recycling service... "Please deny Recycling Services Incorporated's application to bring construction and demolition debris to Claremont Junction." "We," the undersigned, "oppose a Type 1A permit application filed by Recycling Services on behalf of Acuity Management Incorporated due to the negative effects of consolidating massive volumes of unscreened, mixed, construction and demolition debris in Claremont Junction, and the damage to the environment, the region's infrastructure, and the health of local citizens." "We urge the Department of Environmental Services to deny this application and to adhere to its mission statement." And I quote your mission statement, "to sustain a high quality of life for all citizens by protecting and restoring the environment and public health in New Hampshire." Personally, I find it amazing, simply hard to believe, that a project of this magnitude and so impactful to a community can be based on a 38-year-old permit, hand-typed. Where are the protections for New Hampshire citizens? This petition with hundreds of signatures will be formally submitted at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And next, we'll hear from Ken Burke. And Mr. Burke, please begin by stating your name.
Good evening. My name is Ken Burke. I live here in Claremont. I've been here since 2007, so I'm an outsider. My wife's lived here her entire life. Some years back, we started a small electronics recycling company here in Claremont. We were successful for about 15 years. Somewhere along the line-- I did a lot of industrial cycling companies up in the Upper Valley and smaller companies. Somewhere along the line, though, my time of working with electronics and tearing things apart, I developed a leukemia that I still live with to this day. I am in remission, have been for a number of years, but uncurable. And I often wondered, was my exposure to the electronics because of my being naive? I didn't really know what I was doing, but I learned from others. And we, like I said, we had a successful business. I did a lot of business over the years on a smaller scale with folks at Recycling Services in the past. Our guys, some of the guys, they're great people. I know them well. I think that something should be considered is with the exposure to the stuff that they're going to get delivered to their property. They could be me in a few years. Some of them could be me now. I've been to that yard before. They've cleaned it up to a certain degree. And you have to believe that people dump stuff. They just want to get rid of it. They don't pay attention to what they're throwing out because they figure they can get away with it. And these guys that are here as reps for Recycling Services are exposing themselves to that same stuff. And that's scary to me. I oppose this on that grounds and the fact that-- my roads alone-- the reps did a great job of saying everything I wanted to say. Fantastic job, Ms. Damon. Yes, construction guys I've dealt with in the past will throw anything in because it's going to go somewhere else. And you never know what's coming in that next load. Will it be your kids? Will it be your grandkids? Will it be you getting exposed? It only takes a tiny bit. And next thing you know, you live with or you die with what was dropped off in your neighborhood. And we can't have that. It just can't happen. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Jerry Cross, followed by Marilla Harris-Vincent. Please begin by stating your name.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Cross. I live at 268 Maple Avenue, literally right around the corner from the proposed site. And a gentleman earlier here said there's going to be four broad categories spoken to. But I would suggest there's another one too, which I'm going to speak to, and that's quality of life. First of all, it has been spoken to as far as the roads are concerned. And anyone that lives here, you only have to take Maple Avenue heading over towards South Street. And you see it's starting to look like a cow path up through there. And Claremont-- and this is a local issue-- but we suffer already from lack of funds for our needs. As far as the tax base is concerned, we have some of the highest taxes for real estate anywhere in the state, which obviously is our local concern. But this would accomplish nothing more for Claremont citizens than additional financial burden and diminished quality of life. The other thing, too, is we live, again, right on Maple Avenue, just down the road a little bit from Maple Avenue School. In previous hearings, we've heard from Acuity that they do not access Maple Avenue for their trucking. And that is a bald-faced lie because we see them go by every day. I also question one of the comments that the lady made tonight as far as restricted hours. I've been to every one of these hearings that we've had over the years, and every time, the goalpost moves. And I don't trust this company. And I would hope that we would be able to rely on and depend on our local representatives, as well as our state representatives, to protect us from very deep pockets, from an organization that can afford to just keep coming back and wearing us down to where potentially we just fold our heads. So, I would hope that you would deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Marilla Harris-Vincent.
Hello. My name is Marilla Harris-Vincent. I'm a Claremont resident, and I'm the New Hampshire River Steward at Connecticut River Conservancy. CRC strongly opposes Acuity's request to modify its 1987 permit to operate a construction and demolition waste transfer facility here in Claremont. This modification allows the current facility to accept construction and demolition debris, increasing its capacity from 75 tons per day to 500 tons per day, or 130,000 tons annually. This proposal poses significant threats to the region's water resources and overall water quality. CRC is particularly concerned with how the change in operation will impact Meadow Brook, the adjacent wetlands, aquifers, and ecologically significant areas, as well as the Connecticut River. Since 1952, CRC has worked to protect and restore the Connecticut River and its tributaries. CRC represents thousands of members across New Hampshire, Vermont, Massachusetts, and Connecticut, and is the only nonprofit organization dedicated to protecting the entirety of the Connecticut River watershed. Our organization considers the localized impacts, as well as the watershed-wide implications of Acuity's proposal. This modification raises significant environmental concerns, including potential impacts on air and water quality, increased traffic, and noise pollution. The expansion of CND waste operations would intensify risks associated with the release of harmful particulates, chemicals, toxins, and heavy metals into surrounding neighborhoods and water resources, posing a direct threat to public health and safety. CRC is especially concerned with the possible contamination of Meadow Brook, a tributary of the Connecticut River, surrounding wetlands and the adjacent aquifer. Meadow Brook and its adjoining wetlands are vital components of the local ecosystem, providing essential habitat and contributing to water purification processes. The introduction of construction and demolition debris poses a substantial risk of contaminating these precious resources. Additionally, the proposed facility's proximity to ecologically significant areas heightens the risk of environmental degradation. Contaminated leachate from the site can introduce pollutants into these sensitive areas, leading to a decline in biodiversity and impairment of fundamental ecosystem services. Furthermore, any contamination reaching the Connecticut River would have widespread consequences affecting water quality, aquatics ecosystems, and communities downstream. Given the risk to water quality, human health, and the environment, CRC urges New Hampshire DES to prioritize environmental protection and public safety by rejecting Acuity's permit modification request. Safeguarding the integrity of our land and water resources is essential for the health and well-being of our communities and the long-term sustainability of our beloved Connecticut River watershed. Thank you for your consideration.
And thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Eric Peabody, followed by Peter Cameron.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Eric Peabody. I am a lifelong resident of Claremont and a father of two Maple Avenue School kiddos. I'm also a licensed land surveyor in New Hampshire and Vermont with 19 years of experience in surveying and land planning. Tonight, I am wearing that hat. Acuity Management, Inc. is the owner of Recycling Services, Inc. and is seeking to modify their existing permit to now include construction and demolition debris and increase their current permitted capacity by approximately seven times. Their current permit only includes recyclable materials to be processed. Acuity is seeking a waiver of NHDES Rule ENVSW 403.02B, which states that any collection, storage, transfer facility shall be sited no less than 50 feet from any property line. The lot at 43 Industrial Boulevard is not deep enough to meet this 50-foot setback requirement for the front and rear property lines. In fact, the lot is less than 100 feet in depth with an area of just 1.5 acres. The truck queuing plan submitted by Acuity shows all of the dumping and processing of CND debris to be done on this 1.5-acre lot. Acuity is proposing to handle up to 143,000 tons per year. 143,000 tons per year on 1.5 acres. For context, Resource Waste Services has a CND facility in Epping, New Hampshire, that processes 162,000 tons per year. This is admittedly 13% more than Acuity is proposing, but the site in Epping operates on 30 acres of a 75-acre property. To reiterate, Acuity is proposing to operate on 1.5 acres. This 143,000 tons per year Acuity is proposing is seven times the amount they currently process. Seven times the current amount within the same footprint of land. Clearly, the site is too small for the proposed change of use. The applicant is claiming a hardship because the lot at 43 Industrial Boulevard isn't large enough to meet the requirements to run a CND facility. If an airport doesn't meet the requirements to land a 747, you don't try to land it there anyway. "You keep flying until a suitable place to land is found." "Acuity needs to find a different piece of land that properly meets the requirements for a CND facility of this magnitude." "I am pro-business, especially in Claremont. I want to see my community continue to thrive. I have friends and family that are business owners, as well as myself. I support Recycling Services, Inc. continuing with their current recycling operation, but strongly implore DES to deny this permit modification request." Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Peter Cameron, followed by David Messier.
I'll make this very quick. You know, and I'm not expecting a big hand at the end of this. The fact is that we've been in Claremont since 1979. Recycling material. You all go home and sort your recycled material. You know, I do. I think we all do. We all expect that it'll be recycled. You know, at the end of the day, you know, we're only going to be operating with material from New Hampshire. Now, granted, it won't all be from Claremont, but when you have a house where you put on an addition or you do repairs, you know, that material has to go somewhere. I don't know where you think it goes now, but a lot of it ends up going in landfill. And the proposition we've given you folk, you can either believe us or not. I mean, that's-- I understand there's a lot of folks here that are skeptical, and that's fine. But, you know, our perspective is we're going to do what we said we're going to do. We're going to treat it the way we said we're going to treat it. And we're actually not putting material in landfill. Your recycled material, which is New Hampshire material, will be going to a landfill in Ohio-- somebody asked about where it goes-- which is the largest landfill, incidentally, in the United States. And they're euphoric about getting it. And they'll get it on a railcar. So, I would almost assume that we're all at some level enthusiastic about recycling. And, you know, when you recycle, you have to do something with it. Somebody has to recycle it. We are proposing that we will help that process in New Hampshire. Thank you. Hold the applause down.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll-- I'm going to ask everyone to be respectful. Next, we'll hear from David Messier, followed by Candace Crawford.
Thank you. Hello. My name is David Messier, and I'm a citizen of Claremont. I'd like to bring up the issue of fire suppression and the apparent lack of plans to address the potential for a large-scale fire at the site. Last summer, Keene Recycling and Transfer Station had back-to-back fires with an estimated $400,000 in damages. Given the distance of Acuity's site from the local fire station, it would be several minutes before fire apparatus could reach the site, allowing a fire to flare up in size. Construction and demolition debris contains large amounts of combustible materials, some with potentially toxic content. A large fire would likely require tens of thousands of gallons of water to suppress. The site is located next to an aquifer and a brook that flows into the Connecticut River. I believe environmental regulations require the site to contain any runoff from fire suppression, but I don't see how they could possibly do this on such a small site. This doesn't even address the toxic smoke that would affect the adjoining residential neighborhood. This site is simply too small for the large-scale CND recycling center that is being proposed. I urge the DES to deny this application on these grounds, as well as all of the other concerns being raised this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Candace Crawford, followed by Mark Behringer. Oh, thank you. So, Candace Crawford, followed by Kip Ryan. And Ms. Crawford, please begin by stating your name.
My name is Candace Crawford. I live here in Claremont. I happen to be a member of the Claremont School Board, and last night, we approved this statement. The Claremont School Board stands in opposition to Acuity's proposal to bring a very large toxic waste sorting facility in Claremont, New Hampshire. We take this position because of our concern for the children of Claremont. While the proposal states that truck traffic will be on the outskirts of Claremont, there are no provisions for monitoring this activity effectively. Citizens are already aware of big trucks that use unauthorized truck routes on Broad Street, South Street, and Maple Avenue without any penalty. It is not hard to imagine that Acuity trucks will be using these unauthorized routes, which pass by several of our schools and streets where our children walk to school. Additionally, we are concerned about air quality and the inherent risks should the expansion take place. Research that identifies the risks that toxic waste has on children and their development has been well documented. It is much better to prevent it from ever occurring than trying to develop-- and-- excuse me-- than trying to develop a plan for mitigation. The proposed facility will be located close to the Maple Avenue School and the neighborhood houses where several children live. Claremont School Board takes its responsibility to advocate for children seriously, and we think it is a very important message to speak out against this potentially hazardous effect this facility would have on our children of Claremont. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I understand that Mark Behringer had to leave. Hopefully, Mr. Behringer will submit his testimony written. And next, we have Kip Ryan, followed by John Lambert.
Good evening. My name is Kip Ryan, and I was born and raised here in Claremont. I've always been proud to call this community home. But proposals like this make me question our future. Acuity wants to bring truckload after truckload of construction and demolition debris into our town every day, filled with toxins and pollutants. This isn't just about inconvenience. It's about poisoning our air, our water, and our health. It's about the damage that these huge trucks will do to our roads, the roads that we already cannot maintain. If we allow decisions like this and allow Claremont to turn into a dumping ground-- and for those of you who are not from Claremont, we're already kind of seen as a dumping ground. We're trying to break that stigma. But how this is going to play out for me and my family-- understand, I-- We're not going to stick around. There's not going to be a future here. So I encourage you guys to say no to this, because you're going to lose good, involved people who care deeply about this community. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from John Lambert, followed by Gary Dickerman.
My name is John Lambert. I'm a Claremont native. I'm a property owner of the railroad station in Claremont, which is the Amtrak Passenger Station. I also have an apartment house within a few hundred feet of this construction permit. I object to this proposed construction and demolition waste handling facility. It will bring noise, dust, toxic dust, heavy traffic, pollution, and to my, you know, highly populated neighborhood. Of special concern is the effect on the water. According to the State of New Hampshire Geological Survey Department Director, which I presented illustrated information to you this afternoon, forty-three Industrial Boulevard sits directly atop a large sand aquifer and metal brook that is, reaches all the way down to the Connecticut River. You know, fifty percent of all New Hampshire residents' public water supply comes from groundwater aquifer. We don't want to see this polluted. I do not believe the runoff or leachate from the dust control fire suppression, rainwater flowing through the bodies of trucks and trains that are being loaded of toxic C and D waste can be properly retained, contained in that, in that area to prevent the pollutants from entering this sandy soil aquifer. I request that you conduct a baseline groundwater study before you ever grant a permit. And, Mr. Cameron, I don't want you building a toilet in the middle of my living room to accommodate waste for the public.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Gary Dickerman, followed by Sharon Francis.
Thank you. My name is Gary Dickerman. I'm a resident of Claremont, and I'm the Chair of the Claremont Conservation Commission. Our commission is concerned with the potential contamination of Meadow Brook, as well as the wetlands adjacent to and downstream of the expansion site. Soils that surround the entire property are rated as excessively drained. This means that they allow water to pass through very quickly. Hence, any contaminated leachate or runoff could rapidly find its way into the adjacent wetland or brook. Meadow Brook crosses under Plains Road and flows through a freshwater forested shrub wetland before crossing Route twelve eight. Just beyond that crossing, it enters one of Claremont's ecologically significant areas, then into an aquifer along the Connecticut River. This aquifer extends to the southern border of the city of Claremont. If Meadow Brook becomes contaminated, the wetland, the ecologically significant area, the aquifer, and the Connecticut River would all be impacted. Our concern is magnified when one considers the half-life of water pollution, that being the time it takes for the concentration of a pollutant in water to decrease by one-half through natural processes. In the case of heavy metal pollutants, the half-life can be decades. In conclusion, the Claremont Conservation Commission respectfully requests that DES deny the modification of the existing permit. This will fulfill the state's role as trustee of its waters by providing for the wise utilization of water and related land resources, preventing and controlling water pollution and protecting freshwater wetlands. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And next, we'll hear from Sharon Francis, followed by Representative Judy Aaron.
Hello, I'm Sharon Francis. I live in Charlestown, next door to Claremont. I've spent over fifty years being a worker in environmental protection throughout our country. I've been acknowledged and rewarded by the Council of Mayors, by the National Governors' Association. I've been the White House Conservation Staffperson. I've taken on a lot of tough environmental problems, like acid rain that used to be killing our forests in northern New Hampshire. Well, we mobilized New Hampshire forest enjoyers and scientists and partnered them with coal miners and coal mine owners and people in southeastern Ohio and really talked about acid rain and talked about realistic solutions to addressing that hazardous detrimental problem. The solution that those partners representing polar opposites of opinion came up with was taken by Governor Sununu the first to Washington. It became an amendment to the Clean Air Act. Solutions are possible, and I'm here today to join with all the voices who said this application is unwise. It should not be approved. The lot is much too small. There are aquifer impacts, as we've just heard, which are serious. Soil studies have not been done. We've all learned from Dalton that these recycling facilities, waste facilities, just have a habit of expanding because there's greater and greater volume. I have a suggestion. It obviously would need a lot of work, but I think it's a constructive approach that Acuity should be undertaking rather than this mistaken proposal. This is a nineteenth-century proposal. We all need a twenty-first-century solution, and that is for Acuity or its successors to work with the generators of waste and do the sorting, the management, and the disposal plans on-site so that any traffic that results isn't going to another dump site in Claremont, but in fact is going to the final disposal destination. That idea needs to be worked out, obviously, and I can't sit here in twenty minutes and put it together for you, but I hope it's taken seriously because this idea is wrong. The site is too small, and it should be rejected.
Thank you for your testimony. And next, we'll hear from Representative Judy Aaron, followed by Representative Michael
Good evening. My name is Representative Judy Aaron. I represent the District Sullivan County, District Four, which are the towns of Acworth, Goshen, Langdon, Lampster, and Washington. And I'm here tonight to listen and learn, and I have listened and learned. I am, I happen to be Chair of the Environment and Agriculture Committee in the New Hampshire House. DES and folks who are here are no stranger to me as they come in testimony to my committee. And we have been working very hard on many different bills regarding waste, solid waste setbacks, and, and other issues having to do with solid waste disposal, recycling in our state. Based on what I've heard tonight from members of this community, I absolutely agree that this particular site is inappropriate for this project. It may be a very good project, but it's absolutely the inappropriate site for it. And if, if indeed they are seeking for some sort of exemption, well, there's a reason why that there is a restriction for that site for that, and I don't believe an exemption should be given. I think that this permit should be denied based on what I've heard from various people who have talked about this project. It just really seems like this is not the right place to do this. So that's all I'd like to say, and especially as Chairman of the Environment and Agriculture Committee in the House, I hope that you will deny the permit, and that I really hope that Acuity can find some other place to do this. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Representative Michael Aaron, and then we'll hear from Representative Margaret Dry.
Thank you. My name is Representative Michael Aaron. I am the other representative from District Eight, which includes Acworth, Claremont, Croydon, Goshen, Langdon, Lampster, Sunapee, Springfield, and Washington in alphabetical order. I have been trying to stay pretty quiet and neutral about this project as I learn more about it, but after hearing the poignant testimony of all of you and seeing all of you come out, I cannot be quiet or neutral anymore, and I have to say, this is the wrong project for Claremont. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And next, we'll hear from Representative Margaret Dry. And following, following the representative, we'll hear from Representative John Cludier.
Thank you. Hi, Margaret Dry. I live in Plainfield, and I represent also the towns of Cornish, Newport, Unity, and Charlestown. And if you think about that, except for one road coming over from Vermont, you have to get through one of those towns to get to Claremont. So it's not just Claremont that's dealing with this. It's all the towns around it, all of our neighbors. And we don't just share roads. We share air quality. We share water quality. So very simply, I'm just asking, on behalf of all of our roads, all of our air, all of our water, and most importantly, our neighbors in Claremont, I respectfully ask that, you know, I'll bring this project to Claremont. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Representative John Cludier, followed by Jerry Demoro.
Okay, thank you very much. I was wondering, first, I wasn't sure whether I was going to speak, but I feel I must. I am State Representative John Cludier. I am a Claremont native. I've lived in this community most of my life and in New Hampshire all my life. And I know in New Hampshire, one of our greatest assets is our natural environment. And this is a bad project, especially where it's located, simply because it's going to impact our natural environment, our health. I am very familiar with, with Maple Avenue, which is going to be one of the major approaches. When I was eight years old, my family moved to Claremont from North Charlestown, which is also going to be, I think, be affected by this, and right next, maybe less than a mile from the site of this. So I'm very familiar with this area. It's a beautiful area. There are a lot of homes. If anything, there are more homes and people than when I moved, the way first family moved in nineteen sixty-five. It's also next to school Maple Avenue, which I went to school. So I'm, to me, the challenges that our children face, some of whom are living in apart, homes and apartment buildings that are older than nineteen seventy-eight and got to deal with the lead, that's bad enough. And this is going to expose them, I think, the way this project is designed, to even worse, environmental hazards. But I also want to speak, it's not just the environmental hazards. As a member of the House Public Works and Highways Committee, I'm very familiar, become very familiar with the issue of roads, road damage. And one of the things I hear constantly from my constituents, the roads are in bad shape. What are you going to do to help fix them? You know, they're very upset with the city, you know, they, they feel the city needs to put in more money, you know, and they don't like the property taxes to pay for. Well, this project with eighty trucks a day, I guess for at least five and a half days a week, is only going to make the roads worse. So we have enough challenges as it is. And I know recycling is not easy, but I feel this is a bad project where it's located, and I ask the DES to please deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Jerry Demoro, followed by Gary Merchant.
Thank you. My name is Jerry Demuro, and, and I want to thank the New Hampshire representatives for being here and their input. It is important that the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services deny these applications for two reasons. One is environmental pollution. And if I can read this. The demolition debris, toxic particles, lead chips, environmental dust, contaminated dust, harmful chemicals will drain out of the railroad cars that are holding this debris and run onto the ground. The gondola cars that will be five a day full will have to be parked somewhere. These gondola cars are designed with holes in them to drain the water, and in this site, it will be full of particulates. And I want to point out the demolition cycle. One, at the site, it's demolished. It's crushed at the site. Number three, it's crushed and compacted in a dumpster and then traveled, four, traveled to the dump site, which would be Claremont. It would be, five, it would be dumped on a concrete pad. Then the debris will be mixed together to get the metal out. Number seven, it'll be pushed up into piles to be loaded on the railroad car. Then it'll be picked up, dumped again into the railroad car. And number nine, it'll be crushed in the railroad car to compact it. Now, the full cars, probably five a day, will have to be stored somewhere. We have no idea yet where these five cars a day are going to be stored. And by the way, five times five is twenty-five full cars. That's a week. Will have to be stored somewhere. And if it rains, or if the debris inside them are wet, it'll be draining on the ground. Secondly, in terms of, in air pollution, every single day, there'll be equivalent of four fifty-gallon drums of diesel fuel that will be burned at that specific site. And it will only be a thousand feet away from an elementary school in a residential Such concentrations of diesel exhaust in that small site is considered carcinogenic to humans by the American Cancer Society and the International Agency for Cancer Risk. Exhaust from thirty to fifty big trucks a day, a backhoe, a large front-end loader, an excavator, a crane, and locomotives moving this, this debris around every single day next, near an elementary school is irresponsible, especially in the summer when children aren't outside. And thank you very much, and we appreciate that you deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Gary Merchant, followed by Jack Hurley. Mr. Merchant, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you to the department for being here tonight and listening to our concerns. For the record, I am Gary Merchant, resident of Ward Two in Claremont, New Hampshire. As a lifelong resident of the city with three wonderful grandchildren living here, I rise to voice my opposition about local control and the small parcel of land that we expect to use to handle the project. I've said it before, there's one in Epping, someplace else in the other state, that does something comparable, not quite the same size, a little bit larger, but the amount of land that's allocated towards it is significantly greater than what we have here in Claremont. In addition, state roads, for those who understand something, in the cities, we have an urban compact, which means the city is responsible for maintaining state roads within the city boundaries. So the trucks that are coming in that use state roads, not the state's responsibility, they're the town's responsibility. That means that's a taxpayer locally, not coming from the state. Representative- Representative Cloutier, you're absolutely right. The roads will take a beating. They're already taking a beating. It's going to add to it. And all of that's going to fall back onto the local property taxpayer. Our taxes in Claremont are hard enough as it is to add insult to injury is something I think we don't need to have. I would also say it's a good idea. I agree with Representative Aaron. It makes sense, or Representative Aaron, yeah, there, and I have two tonight. So what I say is that it's a good idea, but the wrong place. As someone said before, if you're flying a seven forty-seven, it may be an airport, but it's not the place to land it, nor is it the place for the project. I do ask that DES consider extending the comment period for an additional thirty days for a total of sixty. Given the significant turnout here tonight, the public comments that have been made, I think it's only fair to this community for them to be given the extra time to get their thoughts together, to respond to you folks on their concerns with the application. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Jack Hurley, followed by Margaret Hurley. Mr. Hurley, you have the floor.
I'm Jack Hurley and I live in Claremont. I looked at the DES application form for a permit modification and was, actually was impressed. If completed properly and honestly, DES would get the critical information necessary to protect our residents and our environment while allowing the intelligent and comprehensive management of our state's solid waste. That's the form. Then I looked at the applicant's application, the completed application. It was clear to me that this applicant does not take DES and the application process seriously. It doesn't provide DES with the information it needs to make a wise decision. But more important, the applicant does not take me and my neighbors, our environment, our infrastructure, our safety, seriously. Frankly, this application is an insult to Claremont. And it's rising. And I believe it's an insult to DES. A section of the application requires a statement of need. This applicant's response is that, quote, "that it fulfills an industry need," unquote, and, quote, "allows expansion into a new market," end quote. The application gives no information or data supporting these supposed needs. And there's no mention of any need in Claremont. But the applicant, and this is laughable, although it's really not laughable, it's really pathetic, but the application says the facility will benefit local roadways because some debris will be hauled away by railroad. Does the applicant think DES wouldn't realize that fifty to seventy trucks per day will still be hauling junk to the facility? And that would have a huge impact on the roads that the rest of us use? What kind of benefit would that be? Certainly Claremont does not need a C and D collection facility. As you know, the application also requires an impact evaluation, requiring the applicant to identify all impacts, both positive and adverse, which the proposed modification will have on each of five considerations. This application mentions no adverse impacts in any of the five categories. Tonight, you are hearing many of the adverse impacts that the applicant was not honest or forthright enough to tell DES. A few years ago, Meg and I settled in Claremont after looking at communities up and down the Connecticut Valley on both sides of the river. People told us that Claremont was a city remaking itself. We visited Claremont and drove and walked through some of the neighborhoods, and it just felt good. And we've been pleased with a community that continues to be.
I'm sorry, time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
We don't want Claremont turned into a dumping ground.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Margaret Hurley, followed by Ernest Montenegro.
Thank you. I'm Margaret Hurley from Claremont, and I'm just awestruck by how many people are here. I think that's great. Thank you all. I want to correct something very quickly that was stated by the person speaking for Acuity about how, you know, it's just going to be things like drywall and stuff coming in. Drywall's toxic. I don't know if you know about the drywall from China that we have, where they mix in toxic waste, because they don't know what to do with their toxic waste. And a lot of asphalt, by the way, is radioactive, because some states use fracking water that's radioactive, because it has salt in the wintertime. So you're getting radioactive asphalt, so it's not that clean. Acuity is of no use to us. They want to profit at our expense, processing out-of-state toxic waste, poisoning us in the environment. Acuity acts like a selfish teenage bully when they don't get their way. When we rightly, with self-respect and self-preservation, say no to them, no, 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 they sue us. No is a complete sentence. Nothing Acuity does shows environmental stewardship, sustainability, compassion, respect for us, professionalism, innovation, collaboration, a sense of reality, honesty, and foresight. Those are the professional values we expect companies to practice if they want to operate in our community. Nothing less. Therefore, Acuity doesn't deserve to come here.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Ernest Montenegro, followed by Darrell Putnam.
Hello, my name is Ernest Montenegro and I'm a long-term resident of Claremont. And we, my wife and I moved here about thirty years ago. And at that point, there was a huge fight with an incinerator here in town, and we actually won that fight. And I'm hoping we'll win this fight. And the one thing that actually surprises me most about this whole meeting is that the tenacity of Acuity to continue to do what they're doing, knowing that we don't want them. And I admire that tenacity. Nonetheless, it's a bad idea. And like all bad ideas, they start out with a Disneyland kind of view of things, and this is nothing that Disneyland has anything to do with. So, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is Darrell Putnam here? I'm sorry, David Putnam. Thank you. And after Mr. Putnam, we'll have Rob Walker.
That's right, I've been called worse. David Putnam, Ward Two, Claremont, New Hampshire. I've been a businessman in Claremont for over fifty years. I've served on every board and commission in the city, plus some state responsibilities, except for the city council. When we heard the first application on the planning board and we did a site plan visit for this facility, I was immediately struck by how little room there was to do this work. I know the turning radius of a payloader. I know what it takes for dump trucks to come in and maneuver and dump their loads while payloaders are doing their work, shuffling the stuff into, the materials into railroad train cars. And an acre and a half just does not provide that amount of room at all. So it made me understand and believe that there would be compromises made with the site as they used it that would go against any permitting or regulations that we provided for them. So that's, one of my biggest concerns is the site plan itself. When we looked at it from the zoning board, which I was a member of, they could not prove a hardship to us at all. And as you know, the criteria for the zoning board is to prove a hardship. And you can't use financial loss as part of the hardship. The hardship has to be proven to show that if you aren't granted permission, more harm is done to the land. Well, in this case, the land would be preserved with the denial of the application. So we felt we were on good grounds with all the decisions that we made. And their appeals have now come to you to circumvent and go around the planning board and the zoning board and the administrative decisions that this city has provided. And it's rude, it's obnoxious, it's very upsetting, I guess. I'm upsetting so much, I'm quivering inside, because this just is not appropriate for them to think that they have a better idea what they can do to us when we know what we can do for ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. David Putnam. Next, we'll hear from Rob Walker, followed by Ken Aldrich.
Sure, Guy, thanks. Thank you. My name's Rob Walker. I'm a resident here in Claremont. I'm a business owner. I'm an operator of recreational facility, cooperator of recreational facility. I've served on boards. I am vested in this community, and I'm excited that this is going to get denied, right? We're, I'm very pleased at all my neighbors and friends and family and everybody here that came out tonight and all the opposition that we're hearing, because it's exactly where I stand. I'm in strong opposition to this. The use, not only for our roads and our air and our water, the proximity to the school, the three hundred acre park that I love so very much, the visible watershed that's right there, it detracts from the brand of Claremont that we're trying to make. I think that a lot of us have put a ton of effort in, whether it's Sugar River region, residents working their tails off to make Claremont a better place. I think that the function and purpose of this is a hundred and eighty-degree departure from years of effort of rebranding, right? So we've heard testimony about Wheel and Brader and all the other things that we're trying to forget. We're not looking to go back. Claremont and the surrounding areas have become associated with a specific brand. There's some outdoor recreation, that's what I bring to the table a lot, and I stand on a rooftop and I scream it every day here. I think Claremont is poised to really break through on that brand, and this will hurt it. This region has recreational opportunities that are outdoors, and some of them very close. And I get it, as a businessperson, I see, I see what's going on here. I see the financial driver, right, being right there on the rail line. They don't have that if they're other locations, it's what they want. But it's something that this company is lacking in those other spots. Unfortunately, the mitigation plan, I think, is laughable. We all do, the postage stamp size is, is just, it's going to lead to contaminants of our air and our water, and it just doesn't fit who we are as a community. I will yield to others, and I appreciate everything everybody else here has said tonight. I hope you take that into consideration and deny this one. Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Ken Aldrich, followed by Gabriel Brown.
Hi, I'm Ken Aldrich, Claremont, New Hampshire. Forty-two-year resident, just a regular guy. Unfortunately, this facility wants to open up within a quarter-mile of my home. We've heard people talk about Croydon and Grafton and Charlestown of trucks traveling through their community. I'm at a bottleneck of one of three routes to this facility. So for me, I have concerns over trucks in and out. And, you know, they might be covered when they go in, they might be covered when they go out, who knows? What blows out of those trucks as they're driving? Where's it land? It lands in my front yard. My house is fifteen feet from the road. So where does this stuff go? You know, Acuity talks about, you know, recycling. Well, what is recycling? Is there a percentage that they have to recycle when they say, well, we're a recycling facility? Well, it sounds more like it's a transfer facility. Maybe a question for them that you could ask is, you know, how is it possible that they can bring in what they say they want to bring in and dump out, sort, process, and then put into a railcar or whatever else inside an eleven-thousand-square-foot facility? I don't know how that's possible. Maybe that's a question that DES would have for Acuity. Explain, explain how that is possible. How can you do that? And to go along with that, I mentioned, what constitutes recycling? Is there a percentage? So if I bring in a full dump truck, you know, ten-wheeler, and I bring it in and it's all trash, and then I've got, you know, a little, one little bottle of something that can be recycled, is that recycling? It kind of sounds like that's what this facility is set up to do. You know, I live in this neighborhood, less than a quarter-mile from the facility, with my family, my friends, and I'm just counting on New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services protecting me, my family, my friends, and the community. So I ask that by doing so, you deny their permit, their application. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Gabriel Brown, followed by Susan Williams.
Hello, my name is Gabriel Brown. I live right here in Claremont. And so I would like to discuss the pollution that is coming in through Acuity's management company. So like we know, they will be bringing in five hundred tons of toxic, of demolition and demolition debris a day, six days a week. And this is, this is located near residential homes on Maple Avenue and right near our own, one of our own public schools. And this has potential to spread toxic chemicals such as mercury, lead, forever chemicals, dioxins, and other hidden contaminants. These health chemical, these chemicals have been known to cause effects such as cancer, reproductive harm, neurological issues, development delays, and the list goes on. This will lead to our, I have a big issue with our children at this point, because our children are our future. And if we, if we bring this in, then we are going to cause our children to be sick and we are going to, we're going to have a sick Claremont. We cannot have that. I am currently sixteen years old, and this is my future. I can't live here if this is going to happen in our country, in our city, sorry. And something that will happen, that could happen, is that they could get a disorder that I currently have, which is autism, which is a neurological disorder that's brought by environmental factors. If Acuity Company is allowed to bring toxic waste to Claremont, our children and our citizens will be at risk for these illnesses. I implore the state of New Hampshire to turn down Acuity's request to expand their recycling facility to toxin building materials within our city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Susan Williams, followed by Kathy Hubert.
Hi, I'm Susan Williams. I grew up in Claremont. I live now in Plainfield, which is still part of Sullivan County. And I want to thank you very much for hearing our testimonies and our concerns about this project. I fully understand why a company would be interested in this site, the railroad station. But from a community point of view, it makes absolutely no sense. I'm going to echo what the many people here have said before me, that this one-and-a-half-acre site cannot possibly responsibly handle the volume of waste that's proposed with this project. I'll echo again, the porous soil here, it's extremely porous. Any wastewater not captured is going to go down into the ground, into an aquifer that Claremont uses, and eventually to the Connecticut River. I'm going to echo the concern about toxic materials. We say, nothing toxic, isn't it? This is, after all, the sorting facility. This is where we're going to find out that there is actually asbestos amongst this. It's not pre-screened, it's sorted here. Here is where we'll find it out. And I, you know, I'm concerned about these airborne particles floating over to Maple Avenue neighborhood into the school. It's just an inappropriate place. And I also want to question whether all the waste is coming from New Hampshire. I don't see anything in the proposal that limits out-of-state construction and demolition debris. And I don't think Claremont should get saddled with handling other states' materials. They should find appropriate sites within their own state. And I could continue on with all the deficiencies of this site, which you've heard from numerous people, but I'll just conclude with something that keeps running around in my head, which is a question, how the heck did this permit get this far? It's, it's just totally inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Kathy Hubert, followed by Judith Kester.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. My name is Kathy Hubert. I live in Newport, New Hampshire, and I have a very scratchy voice, sorry. Acuity's current plan. Acuity's current plan may be to ship residual waste out of state. But in my nearly three decades involvement with waste issues in New Hampshire, one fact remains clear. Residual waste handled by private industry will always flow to the cheapest tipping fee. And there is apparently no mechanism in the permit to prevent this. Over the years, this has led to a severe decline in New Hampshire's landfill capacity, which cost us as out of state waste has flooded our sites. At one point, nearly 60% of the trash in our landfills came from outside of New Hampshire. A shocking and unacceptable reality as recognized now by our governor. Claremont and Sullivan County have chosen a different path. We are prioritizing regional economic development that includes housing, tourism, developing our Sugar River corridor and clean industry runs, this proposal runs counter to this vision. Acuity is attempting to turn Claremont and the region into their profit, personal profit solution. History with the incinerator and Ashley landfill has shown us that out of state private waste industry will prioritize their bottom line. This is natural for capitalism. Over our long-term economic, environmental and health well-being, leaving the region once again with dire consequences. Very importantly though, I fear from my prior past experience dealing with solid waste issues in this state, DES does not have the necessary laws, staff levels to prevent these negative impacts and should deny this permit. Because Claremont and Sullivan County deserve better.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Judith Kester, followed by Nalia Sargent.
I am Judith Koster and I am a member of A Better Claremont, a group of people that came together six years ago, like-minded, wanting to keep Claremont a prosperous, economically successful, healthy, wonderful place for our children to grow up in and for us to live in. I live on Maple Avenue in Westwood Village. I share 12 plus acres with 11 other condominiums. The Acuity proposed toxic garbage dump will be in our backyard. I have worked 50 years to come and have my home. I love it. I've lived there 29 years this October and it has been my place of peace. If Acuity comes in, it will become not only my place of hell, but all of Claremont's. I am very concerned about the children of Claremont. We have over 600 children that are taught in two different schools, pre-K through 12th grade. Many of them live on Maple Avenue and off and walk to school. I'm concerned about their health and well-being for breathing in toxic air and for the damage that can cause them by trucks coming up and down Maple Avenue filled with garbage, demolition debris that can fall off. I worry about their future and their health. If Acuity is allowed to come in, then where we live in Maple Avenue West Claremont, will we become the canary in the mine? As our health goes, so goes the rest of Claremont. The westerly wind will take it right through. I am very concerned that Acuity, who has heard no again and again over these last six years, seems to not understand, which is it that you don't understand? The N or the O? We do not want Acuity in this town. We want to have a healthy, happy, prosperous place to live. I wonder who has the right to make decisions about whether Claremont's citizens have clean air and water, whether we are sick or well, alive or dead? Who owns Claremont? Not the state of New Hampshire, not any of the governing bodies, nor the governing bodies of Claremont, and certainly not Acuity. So who owns the city of Claremont? We do. The citizens of Claremont own our city. You came here to hear what we want. We would like you to deny Acuity. If you want, I would like you to know how we all feel because you came here to hear our thoughts. If you do not want Acuity in this city, yell no now. No! And no is a complete sentence. Thank you so very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Nalia Sargent, followed by Susan Lawrence.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Director Wimsat. Okay. Cornelia Sargent, Claremont, New Hampshire, Ward 2. Thank you, Director Wimsat and staff for being here. And I want to send a special thank you to each and every member of this audience and participant in this citizens forum. We are speaking out. We say no. I fail to understand quite honestly. I'm grateful that you come, Director Wimsat, with staff. However, it is with trepidation. I'm a veteran of the 30-year incinerator struggle and victory, as well as the Clamshell Alliance nuclear power victory. Half of the nuke got built. It's not the largest twin reactor in the world. I, I do not understand how this was determined to be a complete application. It escapes me. I will do due diligence in the coming weeks when I'm no longer door knocking and dive into more of the written testimony, written records. I haven't had a lot of time to do that so far. However, I do believe that although this applicant places a tremendous emphasis upon recycling under RSA 149M113A, that includes the need to prove necessity, a capacity need. The applicant has utterly failed to do so. Flat out failed. I do believe, unless I've missed something. It's also your obligation under, I don't know which statute, which one it is, but you have, I believe, said that you wish to respect land use law. This is a citizens forum and a citizens fight. The people do not want this. The city is under a gag order because Acuity won't take no for an answer. They've hired Casella's attorney to sue the city. Therefore, our city officials are not able to speak tonight. Was that three minutes?
Oh, you still have a minute.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I don't see the yellow card, obviously. I, I'm, and I do want to say that I know that my relatives and cousins will be very concerned when they find that they are the, one of the owners of the aquifer up by Jarvis Island and that there has been a privately commissioned study. We have one of the 200 most valuable sites in the entire Northeast region. This is privately documented. It's still private information. I guess I'm making it public tonight. We have one of the 200 most valuable sites in all of the Northeast according to the Native Trust, Native Plant Trust, which is formerly the New England Wildflower Society, one of the 200 most valuable sites to protect and preserve for a chance at biodiversity and climate change.
And your time is up, so if you could wrap up, thank you.
Yep. Thank you. I will be submitting written testimony.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Susan Lawrence, followed by Eileen Skarowski.
I want to thank everybody here. I'm Susan Lawrence and I used to be your representative in Ward 1. I live in Unity, just a stone throw over, and I live next to a road. Pollution, yeah. The thing is, is this is, I think, a bait and switch. I think the application is not complete. Okay, we're focusing on this half acre little piece of land, but this whole business starts at every building that's being torn down. We haven't even talked about the diseases that come from rats nests and mice nests, the funguses that are in the sheet rock. Everybody knows how bad the black mold is. This has not even looked at the stuff. And it is also a bait and switch because we're all talking about how little this lot is and how many trucks. So don't you think they're going to be back very shortly and say, well, we bought some more land and we'll do half the trucks. Let's start all over again. I mean, I see this as almost like a commercial rape. No is no. When is no not no? We've been telling our people, we've been telling our women, no is no. Well, the town can say it too. Incomplete application. This application should include all the way where this is starting. That's where this business starts. I was on the 401 non-point solution pollution board in the state of New Hampshire for the feds. And let me tell you, this is non-point pollution. The feds put a lot of money in this and said, this gets into our source. This drains off. How many people here have been hit from detritus from trucks? I've had windows broken. I've had things dented. I've had everybody else, and that's with trucks being tarped. This stuff is going to be finer. This is going to be bacterial. This will be viral. There is no containing it. This needs to be onsite used. Thank you very much. Continue saying no and thank you for all your research. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Eileen Skarowski, followed by Connor Fulmer.
Thank you very much. I'm Eileen Skarowski. I live on, very, very close. I'm from Connecticut originally and I've been here for a long time. And I live very close to the area that is in concern. First thing I want to say, which has not been mentioned, it's a wildlife corridor. There are lots of animals that travel through there and come into my neighborhood. There's moose, bear, fox, and lots of deer. And it's the area where they cross over into the area. The thing I want to reiterate is that with 70 trucks a day, five days a week, that's 350 trucks. The area, they dump the contaminated material, they wash it, they collect it, they scrub it. And then they discard it and I don't know where that contaminated water goes. The area we're talking about is at elevation about 400 feet above sea level. The Connecticut River is at 300 feet. There is a ravine that is adjacent to the area and goes down directly to Ashley's Landing on the river. So not only is there contamination here with possibility of overflow of contaminated water, it really affects the river and everything in the river. So it's not just Claremont we're talking about. Please deny the permit. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Connor Fulmer, followed by Dylan Bladen.
Hello, I've never used a microphone before. My name is Connor Fulmer. I live here in Claremont and I go to Stevens High School. I'm 17 years old. I heard about this meeting from my science teacher, Mrs. Leslie Peabody, and her husband spoke earlier today. Her classes have really touched my heart. I took environmental science with her and I learned about a horrifying case, the DuPont case. And I'm sure that many of you have heard about it and I'm very nervous right now, you can see. But I was so confused and scared because I couldn't comprehend how a company would not care about its citizens where it is. And I was not born here. I came from a very out of nowhere place in Arizona called Chino Valley. We had a visit there quite a few years ago and all the wildlife is disappearing because of human impact. This land is not ours. Just because we all have a brain and a personality and we have hands and fingers does not mean that we own the land that we stand on. We need everything around us. The water, the air, the animals, the land, it is ours and we all share it. Whatever happens here in Claremont will happen everywhere else. I understand that recycling is a very difficult process because we as humans are so intelligent and we have figured out many different ways to do things. And I know that is not a simple process, but we cannot do it here. Hurt our children, your grandchildren, you as people, you deserve to live longer. And I have here the things that other people have said about what could be contained in here, forever chemicals and mercury and lead in form of maldehyde. All those things have lifelong conditions that will impact us greatly. We cannot get rid of it. We need to know, when does this end? We've been saying no for forever. Why won't they answer us? Why won't they take no as an answer? Why do they think they can come here and do all of this to us? When does it end? How many other companies will come here and do this to our land? We deserve to be safe here. I don't want the land disappearing. We have a drought. It's not going very well. We can't poison it and hurt our citizens this way. So I ask you to please listen to everyone in this room and deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Dylan Bladen, followed by Dakin Burdick.
Hi, my name is Dylan Bladen. I'm a resident of Charlestown and I'm currently the onsite foreman at American Recycling. We don't currently take toxic demolition waste and there's no plans on taking toxic waste. I've worked for these guys for a long time. When they started, this place was a mess. They cleaned up an underground oil tank, barrels of waste that needed to be discarded. They paid to take care of it all. And from what I'm seeing, they're going to do the best thing they can environmentally with this new property. People have come in and they say that our piles are kept very, very small. That is because we don't bring material into stockpile. It comes in so that we can get rid of it and get it out of the state. Currently, a lot of this CND winds up in landfills in New Hampshire. Why wouldn't we take out the recyclable materials, recycle what we can and send the rest somewhere else that wants to handle it better than we can? That's about it, but thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will hear from Dakin Burdick, followed by James Contoit.
Hi, my name's Dakin Burdick. I'm a Claremont resident. I'm opposed to this proposal. First of all, I'm going to disagree with the previous speaker because construction and demolition debris by definition includes hazardous waste or can include hazardous waste. I think the company's original claim was really disingenuous at best at the start of this hearing and that worries me. I also, I go to the recycling facility every so often. I enjoy going there. I like the fact it's there. I find it useful. But I've got to say that outside the warehouse, the waste right now is not contained. It is in large heaps. Even on a good day, those heaps are pretty big. And if you have a lot more material coming in, it's just going to be larger. I can't see how they're going to be able to contain it. Also, I'm going to reiterate what the school board has said, and that is that there's going to be increased traffic, not only down going to be increased traffic, not only down Broad Street in South, but also Pleasant, and then perhaps out Maple as well. We already see that right now. Trucks, originally when this route was declared a truck route, they were not supposed to go south. They were supposed to be routed out to the west side of town. But routinely, they don't follow that. They go straight down Broad Street. They go past two schools, and now they're going to go past three schools. That worries me as well. Also, I happen to live on that route as well, and it's probably not as important as protecting our children, but the roads are in bad shape. They're going to get only worse. And I can say right now that everybody, sorry, but East Pleasant will be closed next Monday because my sewer has been crushed by increased truck traffic, and they're going to have to close down the street for a day to repair it. Luckily, it won't cost the city anything. It's going to cost me $13,000, but it won't cost the city anything. So for all of these reasons, I'm opposed to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next we'll hear from James Contoit, followed by Cody Raymond.
So, hi, my name is Jim Contoit, Ward Two, Claremont, New Hampshire. I was flabbergasted, and I deviate now from my prepared statement because when Nobis spoke, that I hadn't heard that much of a fairy tale since I was a kid. Everything they said was not true. And then Peter spoke, and Peter spoke untruths. Logic would indicate that we should not be here this evening, and the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services should have closed the door on this re-permitting of an old outdated recycle center long ago. Acuity wants to turn this small mom and pop recycling center into a massive construction and demolition facility. In 2019, I read an article by Patrick O'Grady in the Valley News, and it talked about this new facility. And I immediately alerted a small group of our friends, and we became a Better Claremont. We started a little organization. We had a local water expert by the name of Jan Lambert who gave us our name, A Better This site currently has a permit allowing recycling center, but not a transfer station. Transfer stations are not allowed in Claremont. Now, the things I want to tell you now, I am so happy that since 2019, when we've been ringing this bell, that everybody tonight has covered. All of these points are covered. The property is only 70 feet wide on one acre. The required setbacks are 50 feet. This lot is so small that an 18-wheeler can't turn onto the property. A transfer station in Epping, as we've heard before, operates on 75 acres. They take in 500 million pounds a year. This place wants to take in 312 million pounds a year on a postage stamp. This huge amount of waste is going to arrive on 77 trucks a day. These trucks will mostly come from out of state. They will travel through our region to get to Claremont. The toxic waste will be within a thousand feet of the school. I measured on a map. That's where that figure comes from that we constantly use. And the 400 homes that it's near, I counted them all, the dots on the tax map. The facility is going to bring in PFAS, lead, mercury, formaldehyde, arsenic, asbestos, asphalt, asphalt fumes, benzene, beryllium, 1-bromopropene, 1-3 butadiene, cadmium, chromium, dicetyl, diesel exhaust, ethan. You get the picture. It's going to bring in a lot of bad stuff. The CBA said no. The city council said no. The conservation said no, commission said no. In 2024, all of our New Hampshire House Representatives said no, and tonight we've got some of our new representatives saying no. DPW has issued a letter telling us how bad the destruction will be to the roads. And to make matters worse, there's a lawsuit. They've sued the city now because they don't like the decision, and it's currently on a stay in Hillsborough Superior Court.
I'm sorry.
We request you deny.
Thank you for your testimony. Next we'll hear from Cody Raymond, followed by Vincent Craver.
Hi, my name is Cody Raymond. I live in Claremont. There's not a lot I can say at this point that hasn't already been said. One thing I did want to add to the location is that there is a state office building on Maple Avenue where there's a large concentration of employees and also people seeking state services. On a personal level, I'm just very frustrated that this is coming up over and over again. This community has clearly said no. And here we are again at almost 8:30 on a Thursday night, saying no again. It feels just profoundly disrespectful that we have to keep doing this. So I would ask you to take that into consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. Next we'll hear from Vincent Craver, followed by Brian Sutter.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. I am Vincent Kravik. I had the pleasure of moving to Claremont 16 months ago. And my first day in Claremont, I was amazed at its beauty. We looked around and we settled on Claremont. Every day is a wonderful experience in Claremont with the snow. We see the footprints from the foxes and the reindeer and the moose and things like that, and it's really a joy. In Fairfield County, we have nothing like this. What we have is a lot of pollution. And I mean that on a true statement. I-95 is running through the area. You've got Merritt Parkway, you have all this high-density pollution. And where I'm going with this is, I just want to quote a wise woman, the president's wife, Ronald Reagan's wife, okay? And she came up with just three words, just say no. There's no benefit from this. You're not going to go forward, you're going to be dragged backwards. My background is engineering. I worked on military submarines, all different types, and contaminations and things like that. We had to come up with a system for detecting nuclear poisoning in individuals who, as a result of harvesting wildlife in the north, became contaminated from nuclear poison which precipitated out with the rain. And it affected the animals, and they harvested the animals, and villages were exposed to this. So we had to come up with a system for testing these people out in the field. So it's not a good deal. Lawrence Livermore Lab in Long Island, okay? What are they known for? That whole area is known for the highest breast cancer rate in the country. And I don't want Claremont to go there. What happened was the containment vessel for the nuclear water cracked, got into the aquifer, okay? We don't want to be, Claremont does not want to be known for that. This is not a good path. Again, just say no.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Kravik. Next we'll hear from Brian Sutter, followed by Sharon Francis.
Good evening. My name is Brian Zuter. Thank you, members of New Hampshire DES and fellow community members. I testify tonight as a resident of Claremont, not a city councillor. I'm the president of the Arrowhead Board of Arrowhead Recreation Club, a volunteer-run organization that operates Arrowhead Recreation Area right here in Claremont. Arrowhead's a beloved, beloved community resource, providing year-round outdoor recreation, including skiing, snowboarding, tubing, hiking, and mountain biking. It serves as a hub for families, outdoor enthusiasts, and visitors, contributing to the quality of life and economic vitality of our city. I stand before you tonight in strong opposition to the permit application for the changes to the solid waste collection, storage, and transfer facility at 43 Industrial Boulevard. This proposal raises serious concerns about the transportation and handling of construction and demolition debris, which will have lasting negative impacts on our community. First, the increased transfer of CND waste on our city roads will accelerate road deterioration, leading to costly repairs that burden taxpayers. Heavy traffic, particularly from waste hauling vehicles, will damage our infrastructure and create safety hazard for residents, including pedestrians and cyclists. More alarming is the potential release of asbestos, toxic chemicals, and other hazardous materials into the air and water. This site is near schools and residential neighborhoods, putting families, children, and vulnerable population at risk who are exposed to harmful contaminants. This is not just an environmental issue, it's a public health crisis waiting to happen. Additionally, I have serious concerns about whether the required setbacks will be met. Regulations are in place to protect the community, and failure to adhere to those standards compromise our safety and well-being. Without clear and enforceable assurances, the project will not go forward, should not move forward. Claremont's a community of the values outdoor recreation, natural beauty, and health environment. Arrowhead Recreation Area is a testament to that, serving as a space where families and individuals can enjoy the outdoors. A waste transfer facility of this nature is entirely misaligned with the character of this city and the vision of what we have for the future. I urge you to reject this permit application to protect our roads, our environment, and the health of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zuter. Next we'll hear from Sharon Francis, followed by Matt Bean. Okay, thank you. Next we'll hear from Matt Bean, and then we will go to Kirk Frost. Is Matt Bean here? Oh, well, I hear that Matt Bean left, so hopefully he'll submit some written testimony to us. Next we'll go to Kirk Frost. Is Kirk Frost in Claremont, or is that a remote participant? Okay. Mr. Frost, can you hear me? Mr. Frost, can you hear me? If you can, can you unmute yourself, please?
Oh, my mic is enabled now. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you. Please begin by stating your name.
Oh, yeah, my name is Kirk Frost. And, you know, when I first saw the application, I thought it was a great idea. You know, the whole idea about recycle. When I called up NHDS to ask about it, now, it turns out it wasn't. Then I went back and looked at the application, and it, one thing stood out very clearly, there is no recycle plan. It doesn't contain a recycle plan. In fact, there's no shipping plan. You know, you don't know whether it's going to be trucks or trains. Currently, they're doing mostly everything by trucks. There's no traffic patterns. There's no details about, you know, where the trucks are going to be going or where they're coming from. So it doesn't represent a recycle. Let's see, the other thing I wanted to mention was, I'm just moving on to the thing, oh, so this permit, so looking at the annual reports, we only see the last one of 2023. Now, the 2024 annual report is due March 31st. Why would we not want to delay this at the very least a month or two months out so that we can have the latest data to look at? But if you look at up to five years back, up to 2023, they're basically doing 15 tons to 20 tons per day incoming. Now, they want, the current permit's 75 tons, and they're now asking for a permit of 500 tons per day we're talking about. They're only doing a quarter of their current permit. And it's, in the operation plan that is in there, it's just about moving material. Take it off, move it in, ship it out. We don't even know how. We got a diagram of 26 trucks waiting to receive and ship and across the two lots, and it's about two lots, not one lot. And so the permit doesn't really cover that at all. They also have a plan of the scenarios, and they go from 15 minutes per unloading to 25-minute unloading. And, you know, that is their direction. That's how they get to the...
Mr. Frost, you have one minute left.
Okay, thank you. There's many discrepancies within the numbers if you analyze over the last several years of annual reports. I will detail that in a comment to you, but this, it's, oh, and also, DES is still looking for costs from an unaffiliated outside company for the, how to decommission the site. There's a lot of holes in this, and frankly, as someone else mentioned, how could it get to this point? It really shouldn't be at this point yet. It should be denied or thrown back to them, say, give us a real recycle plan. I'm all for recycling. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next we will hear from Jackie Elliott remotely, followed by Ron Mitchell. Have we got Jackie on our audio?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Please begin by stating your name.
Yes, I'm Jackie Elliott. Claremont was my home for more than 40 years and where I raised my family. I now live in Waterboro, Maine. DES has the authority to deny Acuity's application for this permit modification, and that should be the outcome of this public hearing tonight. Deny the permit modification application. This evening, you have heard the community powerfully articulate why the DES must use its authority to deny this permit application. These are citizens standing up for their rights to direct the future for a thriving community in which to live, work, play, worship, and educate their children. And they want to be heard. Tonight is about the right to live safely with the expectation that decision-makers will honor the right to do so. Polluters who want to violate that right and expectation should find no permission from decision-makers for that endeavor. Jot and tiddles are what permitting decisions are founded upon, but they are the wrong points to begin because jot and tittle decisions are really about how citizens get to live their life and experience it, and the quality of that life and the safety of that experience. These jot and tiddles are a matter of rights. And this hearing is also about the people who get to make the decisions impacting the citizens they represent. DES has a basis to deny Acuity's permit modification application. Local and appointed decision-makers have spoken loudly on this issue. The city code does not allow what Acuity is proposing. DES has a requirement to consider that. Residents have spoken clearly and repeatedly. No is a complete sentence, as you have already heard this evening. Acuity has chosen to...
Elliot, you have one minute left.
All right, thank you. Claremont residents have a right to clean air, safe water, and the right to live in their neighborhoods and send their children to schools free from the assault of toxic pollution. Acuity has no inherent right to pollute the community. DES must deny this permit application. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Next we'll hear from Ron Mitchell remotely. Do we have Ron Mitchell on the audio?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please begin by stating your name.
My name is Ron Mitchell. I'm in Ward Two and here in Claremont, and I want to thank everybody for listening and everybody for coming in in support of denying this application. A lot has been said, and I'll repeat a little bit of it, but I think the most important thing is that the gentleman representing the DES started off this meeting by saying that part of the mission is to protect the environment and the people, and that should be held in forefront of this decision. The application that was provided is intentionally vague, lack of details, so that they can't be held accountable for things that may come up. For instance, they say they are not going to allow hazardous materials, but they can't control that. They can't guarantee that. The wild card is the people sending. The wild card is the people sending the demolition materials and things like that. And we all know that, I'm just going to focus on one, and that's asbestos, okay? That's activated, and it's mostly dangerous when it gets down into particulates and airborne. So the construction site is going to demo a house loaded into a truck. I think Mr. Odier went through the process of how it...
Mr. Mitchell, you have one minute left.
Yep, how it gets to the to the final transfer station. But that being said, it's going to go through any and all of our neighborhoods, no matter which path they take. They aren't sealed containers. They're going to go by schools. As a matter of fact, I think somebody else said, "We're not going to know whether there's hazardous materials until it arrives." And then, it's not going to be the transfer station's fault. But we still have to deal with it. It's still here, and it's dangerous. That's just one. There's no guarantee that there won't be hazardous materials coming into town. There's 13,000 people in Claremont and 300 students in the local elementary school. I asked DEA or DES...
Mr. Mitchell, your time is up. I'm sorry.
I just have one more. I asked DES to hold to the first initial...
Thank you for your testimony. Next on our list is Representative Hope Damon.
I am still State Representative Hope Damon, half of Sullivan County, give or take. I want to first of all thank the DES team for a very respectful, organized process, and particularly for including remote testimony for those who would have found it unmanageable to get here. You really have done a very credit to way state government should work. And I want to ask, please, that there be a 45-day comment period subsequent to this. It's clear that this is of great importance to both Claremont and the broader community, and we would respectfully appreciate an extended comment period. And, sorry. The last thing I would do is just note that in legislative work, we consistently and routinely talk about the importance of local control and the boundaries between state and local. And most of the time, decisions default to the local prevails. Local has already said no to this multiple times. So I really hope that our New Hampshire value on local control is respected by DES. Claremont, you should be proud, and Sullivan County, I am proud to be part of this. This was really pretty impressive. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next on our list, we have Jerry DiMuro, followed by John Tuthill.
Hello, Jerry DiMuro. I'd like to add something to the two points I said earlier regarding the four 50-gallon drums of diesel fuel exhaust being delivered from this one-acre site, and the potential of five full railroad cars full of toxic dust and debris, as well as 25 cars, railroad cars per week, is going to be parked somewhere, and if it rains, that crushed debris is going to go on the ground through the holes of the gondola cars. In addition, I'd like to talk about sound pollution. I was, it was recommended tonight that I do not have sort of a guerrilla theater program here tonight. We were going to have two or three backup beepers in the back beeping constantly while I'm talking. Now, at that site, 1,000 feet away from the school, and with 400 homes in the area, there are going to be 50 trucks per day with backup horns, beep, 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 in addition to backhoe beepers on a backhoe, in addition to a backhoe beeper or siren or horn on a large front-end loader, in addition to, if they have a crane there for a magnet taking out metal debris, there's definitely going to be a horn and beeper on that. In addition, I did mention the excavator. Maybe I didn't. There's going to be an excavator there that will have a beeper on it. And mind you, these are simultaneous, because this program is lickety-split. They're not going to wait a half an hour for these 18-wheelers or 16-wheelers to come in. This, if it does happen, it's an incredibly fast assembly line. So these sounds, in addition to a locomotive starting up and pushing these five full cars, and mind you, they're going to have five empty cars on site, because they're going to have to juxtaposition them all the time. In addition to these cars and the locomotive, and if you want to hear a locomotive, go to Bellows Falls and listen to them. When they, in the yard, they start up, and they're huge, and they're very loud. They're going to be locking up and moving these five gondola cars all the time. I mean, if they're going to have that much tonnage coming in, these gondola cars are going to be filled fast and moved fast. And if you ever heard a train locking up those huge cast iron clamps, it's a large sound. And mind you, this is going to, these locking up are going to be more than 10 to 14 times a day, all winter and summer. So this is important to realize, and thank you for denying this application, which will also lower real estate values. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from John Tuthill.
Thank you very much, and I really must say, I so appreciate DES having come up and organized this extraordinary evening in Claremont. I like Damon, Representative Damon, so proud to be a member of this community and a larger community. I've got an idea. Acuity withdrew their application in 2017. And I would like to suggest perhaps we could raise a standing ovation where the owners of Acuity, several of whom are here this evening, would like to step forward now and agree to withdraw their application. I believe the time, the time has come. I did hear one thing from an owner of Acuity this evening, which did interest me, and that had to do with the fact that the company was willing to agree that all of the material that they would be bringing into the city would be of a New Hampshire origin. I wonder if it might be possible, when looking at that application, to strike the section that says unlimited service area. That is simply unacceptable, but if the company were not willing to withdraw the application tonight, I certainly hope that they would work to see that they will not be moving material in from over a broad region. And I can't see how a 500-ton-per-day facility is going to be able to fill their train cars with renovations and home remodeling projects. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We are going to take a two-minute break just to give people who joined us remotely or anyone else here one last chance to get on the list to speak. So we'll be back in just two minutes. Okay, if everyone will take a seat, we do have a couple of people who have just a little bit more to say. So I'll wait one minute while folks take a seat and settle down. We have Rebecca McKenzie...
Oh, yes, there's...
...followed by Margaret Hurley, followed by...
I have more of a procedural question than a comment, if I may. For the record, I'm still Gary Murchens, resident of Ward Two, Claremont, New Hampshire, proud grandfather of three wonderful grandchildren, Owen, Anna, and Emmett. But my question to you as an agency, there is a list of speakers tonight. When will that list be made available on the website, so we can have a list of who spoke tonight? That's the question. So it's a procedural question of when that information will become available. Thank you.
Thank you for your question, and that is a great question. We're going to need to check with our folks back at the office about how quickly it can get up online. So could you make sure that Sam in the back has your email address, and we can send you the information?
I will. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we have Rebecca McKenzie coming back with some additional testimony.
Thank you, Rebecca McKenzie. I just wanted to, I'm from Claremont, and I grew up here. And I wanted to say that the hill beside this facility is where I played, and the brook that is beside this facility is where I was afraid to catch crayfish, but it was something that I loved playing near. The tall pines right there were my playground along this facility's place. The dunes that are right beside this facility was where I took my model horses, and I played in the sand and had a great time there. So I have some other testimony written, but I'm going to present that to you otherwise. But I just want to emphasize that the hill there that I played on, in the summertime, I rode cardboard boxes down that hill, and in the wintertime, I sledded down that hill. So this is a neighborhood that has so much life and love in it, and it needs to be preserved for the families. The 400 homes that are in that area need that preservation that you can provide by denying this toxic, massive CND facility. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. And next, we're going to hear from Margaret Hurley, followed by Neilia Sargent.
Very quickly, a couple of questions. I have a question, and I have a statement. Up to 30% of all semis have brakes that are no good. So we're going to have these big, heavy trucks barreling through areas where there are lots of children, and maybe dogs getting loose and so on. And a fair number of them will not have brakes that will allow them to stop quickly. So I think that's another safety issue. And then there was a question about the current operation that's going on and how well that's being monitored, and, you know, what the pollution is right now that's happening. We don't know. I mean, these are all questions. We don't really know what's happening. So how would we know if this thing went into operation, what was really happening? Who's going to monitor it? We're not going to go down there every day and watch, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Neilia Sargent next.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Director Wimsat. Oh, yes. Great. Thank you very much, Director Wimsat. I urge you to follow the regulations. You have the power and the authority to deny this permit that is incomplete. I respectfully differ with your determination of completeness in November. And if you do not, I remind each of the audience here that under Environmental Solid Waste Rule 305.04B, that no DES permit is valid until all local, federal, state, and local approvals are granted. Please do not put this pressure on our local officials. I can't imagine the pressure they will be under with a multi-million-dollar profit motive behind backdoor deals. You have the power and the authority to stop this now. The community does not want this. What's more, you know very well, and I thank you, Director Wimsat, for your testimony at the legislature over many weeks. On January 21st, you testified that DES did not have the expertise to evaluate the roads. You left out bridges, and I'll introduce bridges into the record tonight, because I haven't heard anyone mention bridges, but that's a very expensive part of road and transportation costs. Roads, bridges, you do not have the expertise to evaluate the impact on taxes or property values. That alone should be under the public benefit test, I would hope. I haven't analyzed this statutory stuff yet. I would hope that that alone is enough to deny this permit. You have the power to deny this. Please do, and if not, you leave no choice but for the citizens to take this into our own hands. We don't want to go there. You are our authority who can defend and protect us and protect home rule, local control. This is about local control. That's the essence of this struggle. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. And next, we have Troy Putnam.
Good evening. My name is Troy Putnam. I live in Claremont. I live on Camden Avenue, probably, if I were to guess, one of the 400-ish houses that will be directly affected by this. Also, a foreword, I'd like to apologize for my nervousness and probably flaky public speaking, how's I work at 3:00 AM this morning? So, but I wouldn't miss it for the world. So I oppose this project. I've lived here my entire life, give or take two years or so. My family has lived here for a very long time. We've had local businesses, community outreach. My grandmother, that was mentioned earlier, Jan Lambert, has had a huge, you know, basically dedicated her life to, you know, keeping water clean and environmental efforts across our area and the country and other countries even. So I, like I said, I live just a hop, skip, and a jump away from where this would be. I have a two-year-old and a four-month-old child. It's hard enough to own a house here, but I do it reluctantly, because I enjoy it here, despite the taxes and what have you. But I think something like this could easily create a tipping point that could start a downward spiral, you know, in a negative direction, in which people for the last few decades have been really trying to, you know, make positive change in town and influence young families, you know, start building families here again, and start small local businesses, as I would like to plan to do here in the near future. But that could change for me and many others if, you know, there's nasty, smelly, toxic waste stations around. So, but that's all I got. Yeah, I oppose the project. So, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Seeing no one else who wishes to provide oral testimony, I'll prepare to close the hearing. But first, I'd like to extend the written comment period until March 27th. So please understand that written comments can be submitted to DES up until 4:00 PM on March 27th. They can be emailed or submitted by mail, and directions for submitting written comments are provided in the public notice for this hearing. Before closing the hearing, I'm going to confirm that we're still connected to our remote participants. Sam, could you please confirm our connection? Sam has confirmed our connection. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for taking the time to participate in this public hearing. Being able to hear your thoughts and concerns is essential to our permit decision-making process. And over the coming weeks, we'll be carefully considering everything that we've heard here tonight. I do encourage folks to also submit written... I do encourage folks to also submit written testimony if you would like to. And I will hereby close this hearing. The hearing is closed at 9:02 p.m.